All right, moving on to item 12.5. I think I'm gonna make a limit that Cleve can only make four of these items on the next agenda instead of five. It's working us to death. This is another exciting opportunity. Item 12.5, adopt a resolution consenting to relieve Tykert Construction from its bid for the Western Placerville interchange Phase 1 project and appropriate $1 million contribution from Eldorado County to the said project and appropriating $100,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund to said project and awarding a construction contract to Doug Veercamp, General Engineering, in the amount of $5,711,299, authorizing the city manager to execute the same. Mr. Webb, do you have the staff report?
Yeah, I'll give a brief overview of this item for you. Before you at the dais this evening, you should have an amended recommendation from the report that went out in the packets. There are some slight deviations and I'll go and I'll detail those here in a moment. There's also, should be copies at the back of the room as well for the public to take a look at. In short, by way of background, the Western Placerville interchange project, I think the council and community by now probably know it pretty well. It's a multifaceted, multi-phase interchange project that involves several phases that include new on-ramps, off-ramps, as well as new roadway alignment components to it. The first phase, or Phase 1A slated to begin construction this fall, and it consists of a westbound on-ramp from Ray Lawyer Drive and an auxiliary lane to connect to the off-ramp at Placerville Drive. This phase is received funds, funding allocation of $6 million from the state Prop 1B Corridor Mobility Improvement Account, or CMIA funds, and by the California Transportation Commission. The project was advertised for construction in late June of this year and bids were opened on September 12th, just earlier this month. And those are some, the bid, the summary of the bids that were received is summarized in the staff report. At bid opening, Tykert Construction was actually the lowest bid by a significant margin. Subsequent to opening that bid, however, Tykert notified the city in writing of mistakes that were made in preparing their bid and requested relief from their bid. In other words, to be relieved from the submittal that they made. There's state law provisions that pertain to how, in public contract code, how those requests for relief are handled. Staff recommends that based on the request from Tykert and based in large part on the substance of the request, that the city consent to the relief of their bid. There are the rationale in terms of the reasoning that is detailed in the report. I won't get into it at this time, but certainly would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So the state, the public contract code allows the city to award the bid to the second lowest bidder, does allow for that. Doug Veercamp, General Engineering, provided, in our opinion, a responsive and responsible bid that was the next lowest. The bid is higher than that of Tykert's. However, Tykert's bid identified as having flaws in it. With that discarded, the remaining three bids of the four that we received are very closely matched, indicating the true cost of the project. After reviewing this as well, staff came to the conclusion that re-advertising this bid would likely result in very little potential savings on the bids. But moreover, the time that it would take to re-advertise really would leave no room for error in terms of making sure that the $6 million that's been secured is utilized within the timelines set aside by that CMIA funding, which is basically early November deadline for us to award a contract. So in light of that, the city looked at, very closely, at the bid amounts and looked at the bid presented by Veercamp. At that point, once all the project costs were taken into account, determined that additional funding would be necessary in order to bridge a gap basically between the contract and construction costs, as well as the other costs which are detailed on the third page of your staff report. Obviously, it goes over the $6 million CMIA funds awarded. The city and the county have been in discussions. The county and the Board of Supervisors, in fact, at their meeting this morning, agreed to contribute $1.2 million to the project. That funding is contingent on an agreement to be negotiated and signed by the county administrative officer in a budget appropriation, which requires a four-fifth vote, which would take place anticipated in mid-October, either October 15th or 16th, at the next Board of Supervisors meeting. That funding would allow for, not only for us to bridge that funding gap to make the project a reality, but it would also somewhat increase the contingency for the project up to closer to 12% contingency, which obviously is a better place to be. Certainly with those discussions with the county, what we have amended with the recommendation that's before you tonight is the amount of county contribution from $1 million, as stated in the original report, to the $1.2 million. And we have also amended the recommendation to include a provision that would, in awarding, if the council should award the contract and agree to award the contract to Veercamp, it would be contingent on completion of an agreement with the county for the $1.2 million contribution and county adoption of a resolution appropriating that $1.2 million in their budget, again, anticipated for mid-October. So that's the primary differences between the recommendation and the original staff report and the one that's before you this evening. I will say that the city, I think we certainly appreciate the partnership with the county on this in helping to see this project through for mutual benefit. It really is a project that I think has mutual benefits to both the city and the county, particularly with this phase and it being immediately adjacent to the county facilities. With that, our recommendation tonight is to, one, consent to relieve Tykert Construction from its bid for the Phase 1A project, to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement for the $1.2 million contribution from Eldorado County to the project. Three, appropriate $1.2 million contribution from Eldorado County to the project and appropriating $100,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the project as well, for a sewer upsize component that's related to the project. And then lastly, awarding a construction contract to Doug Veercamp, General Engineering, in an amount of $5,711,299, contingent on completion of an agreement with Eldorado County for a $1.2 million contribution to the project and county adoption of a resolution appropriating the $1.2 million contribution in their budget. Be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any questions at this point for the information that Mike has presented?
I think it's all well laid out.
Very thoroughly described. Thank you, Mike. One question, Mike, is Doug Veercamp Engineering in agreement and understanding that it's contingent on the $1.2 million contribution from the county?
Yes, I had a discussion with Doug Veercamp myself this afternoon to explain to him the adjustments to our recommendation this evening, and he is fully supportive of that and understands the rationale for it and had no concerns about it.
Okay, very good. I'm glad you communicated that with him, so he understands exactly where we're at with this and our intent.
I do have one more question, one question, Mr. Mayor. In the staff report, you noted that we need to finalize this by November 2, 2012, or our CMIA, our funds are in jeopardy.
They revert.
They revert, and that's correct. Is that right? So if the Board of Supervisors does not approve this, then this project is in jeopardy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that this is a very difficult situation right now, and timing is of the essence.
Certainly very tenuous in terms of the project, and again, you know, the, I think, reiterate our appreciation to the county for their seeing, of course, the mutual benefits of this and their willingness to work very quickly and proactively to help us with that funding gap.
And the difficult situation that Tykert has put us in. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before I invite any member of the public, I'd just like to recognize that we have in our audience this evening the distinguished supervisor from District 3, Mr. Jack Sweeney. Good evening, sir. We appreciate your attendance this evening, as if you have not already attended enough meetings today and this week, and we appreciate you being here. Is there any member of the public that would like to address item 12.5 on those items as Mr. Webb has outlined them?
Sue Rodman, and this time it's the Measure H Committee. We have discussed this project and the fact that that eight-inch sewer line going into the treatment plant has been a problem for a long time. It's definitely undersized and has been a pinch point and an overflow point before, and this really needs to be done. And so we were in very much supportive of putting those sewer enterprise funds where we think that that is probably their highest and best use.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate that. It's good to know that your committee is still very actively watching our sewer and water facilities and where those dollars should be spent. Another member of the public, please.
Good evening, Michael Dobish again. I would ask that the council please reconsider to spend the $140,000 of mitigation money instead of just sending it off to a tree mitigation bank, and I'd like to know what that is, to actually try and use it for beautification in the greater Placerville area instead. I mean, does it have to be actual tree-for-tree replanting, or could we beautify an overpass? I mean, can we use that for something else instead of just sending it off? And I just want people to realize what it's gonna look like in that stretch from Placerville Drive on the north side of Highway 50 up to county building A and B, Big Lots, Carl's Jr., Denny's. They're gonna come in there and cut down every single tree. It's just gonna completely change the look to one of the entrances to Placerville. And we already have, I'm kinda disgusted with the area of the new Placerville Drive Main Street connector, that giant wasteland of six lanes and just rock. It's like, welcome to Placerville. It's just this giant wasteland, and I know that it'd be a horticultural nightmare to try and get something to grow there, just solid rock, but trying to do something. So yes, I would like to know, please explain what a tree mitigation bank is. I guess it's an actual place you send the funds. Does it, does this money just go into the financial sinkhole that is the state's general fund with no actual benefit to the local citizens? Can we add more plants in lieu of the ones that are gonna get lost in certain areas? There's still interchange work that's gonna happen. How feasible is it, the little triangles on the inside of the intersections, or the little sloped area between county buildings A and B? Is there any place that we can add some trees for the ones that are being lost? So that's my only really serious problem with this, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. I will ask a couple of questions here in just a moment. Another member of the public that wishes to address the council. Good evening again, Robin.
Again, Robin. In agreement with, I'm in agreement with everything Mike said. If it is necessary to completely obliterate all the trees and whatnot, can you at least look at maybe the examples of red hawks so that as people are traveling and visiting Placerville, they just don't see another wasteland nightmare as a result of this construction? And I do believe a while back ago, you said at any moment that this project could be rescinded or taken back, and it looks like we're gonna go into debt on this project. So I'm not in favor of the project as a whole. You had stated a long, long time ago that it was something that could be easily pulled. And in light of the messages you sent to the public regarding how devastated our sewers are and they could, they're, you know, could completely corrode at any time and we must have funds, we have to increase our water bill, and in light of the fact that we don't have money to borrow for this project, it seems like now we're dipping into that sewer fund and what happened to all the information that you gave us about our corroding sewers and whatnot? And I just say no to this project as a whole. I just see as a never-ending lose, lose situation for taxpayers of Placerville. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item?
Kirk Smith, City of Placerville. To add to the last two speakers, I think that on page two...
Kirk, could you pull up to the microphone, please, so everybody can hear you at home? Thank you.
On page two, in reference to the cutting of trees, it looks extraordinarily loose. It's not specific. It's not explained as to what's gonna be done to enhance the beautification of that area, or will it be like, you know, this devastation of cut trees? Or will this be Caltrans who comes in and brings in the kind of landscaping they do in Southern California Bay Area where they bring in oleander? I think what you ought to do is have a policy for indigenous landscaping, where you keep the kind of landscapes we see as we come up Highway 50, scrub oak, indigenous pines. For rock, it'd be the mariposa slate and other rocks, fallen trees, but not this kind of landscaping that we see from Caltrans. So I agree with the other two speakers in the name of beautification. There needs to be something more specific so the public has assurances that those are met. Secondly, Mr. Sweeney at a Board of Supervisors meeting not too long ago proposed offering a $2 million loan to the city. Was that by chance related to this project? There was no explanation made about why the city needed it, wanted it, or what? So is it related to this? And the third thing is, it would really be helpful when you're presenting something for the public if we had some kind of map, because they really have to rely on what Mike Dobish said. You're talking about the road that goes parallel to Highway 50. Is that correct? The one where the fast food enterprises, et cetera?
Fairlane Drive. Fairlane?
The Denny's side.
So that would largely accommodate, it seems like, buildings that are already in existence for the county, so wouldn't the county's proportional share be higher than $1.2 million of a $6 million plus budget?
Kirk, this project has been under review for probably eight years at least, and we're not here to review merits of the project. We're here to review the items that, where this project is today as we're ready to award a bid.
And in awarding the bid, are you in a position to refine parameters about landscaping?
There are going to be opportunities as this project moves forward. We're not going to just stick our heads in a bucket of sand and then be surprised to see what Caltrans gives us. We are going to be entering into many, many months of active construction where we will be partnering with Caltrans and the county to complete this project, as has been outlined and has been approved for a number of years.
You'll have to excuse me for not having been here for eight years. I'm only responding to the item that's on the agenda.
Right, and we're not doing project review strictly to address that.
A contract review, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And part of that contract is described on page two, which is that a significant number of trees will be removed, and it also encompasses dependent upon a $1.2 million contribution from the county.
That is correct.
So does that have anything to do with the $2 million that was proposed as a loan to the city?
No, sir.
Does not?
I'm gonna let Cleve answer your questions. Is there anything else?
I guess what you're saying is that's the extent of the contract specifications you're prepared to offer?
We are not getting into the contract specifications. That's what Nate Strong's department and Mike Webb's department is here for. We have a project management firm that is gonna manage this project. You should know that Caltrans gave up on oleanders many years ago. They don't plant those anymore. In fact, they generally remove them statewide as the opportunities present themselves. I think it would be probably more appropriate if you were to get a hold of Mike at his office and get an opportunity to review the project, since you weren't a part of the public hearings that were held a number of years ago.
Absolutely, and maybe...
And then perhaps you could offer your suggestions there.
Just for the benefit of the three of us, explain what the mitigation program would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Cleve, would you like to address any of Mr. Smith's comments?
Yes, I'll let Mike talk about the mitigation issue. I'll address the issue on the $2 million loan. As Mike mentioned in his report, originally we had a lower bid that would not have required the contribution from the county. However, at that time, the issue the city had was a cash flow issue, because although we have a $6 million grant award from the state, it is given to us on a reimbursement basis. In other words, we have to pay the contract and then submit the invoice to the state and they reimburse us, which sometimes is 30 to 45 days in time to receive that reimbursement. So our, as we looked at it, we saw the potential for having up to two months of payments we would have to make before we got any reimbursement from the state, and therefore we were looking at anywhere from a million to $2 million that might be required in cash flow to run this project. And at this time, as you saw our financial report earlier tonight, we don't necessarily have $2 million laying around just to throw into a project. And so we went through all of our options on that. We talked to the state and made a request to the state that they front the money. They have a program for other programs, transportation projects, that can front, I believe it would have been up to $350,000. We asked for a larger amount, however, they came back and said, actually, for these bond funds, there is no pre-funding program. Therefore, there is no money that can be pre-funded under this bond program. And therefore, we were stuck with trying to figure out how do we fund the cash flow for this project? I will state that I think it's a big problem on the state level that should be settled, but beyond that, we looked at what we could do. And therefore, we were discussing with the county a $2 million loan, if you will, that would have covered that cash flow issue about 14 to 16 months till we're done with the project, and then the money would have been returned in full to them. When the new bids, when the bids came in, when Tykert drew their bid, it created another problem for us in that at that point, our bids were over the $6 million amount that we had for construction. And therefore, we changed in our discussions with the county to talk about how we could get it done and a possible county contribution to assist in getting the project done. At the same time, with the $1.2 million and looking what we could do, we determined that we had enough funding to be able to cover the cash flow problem if they contributed $1.2 million. Therefore, the request for the $2 million loan to cover the cash flow was eliminated, and we requested the contribution of $1.2 million, which I need to mention, I think Mike made that clear, but was conceptually approved by the county in their Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. So that's the explanation for the $2 million and the difference of the $1.2 million we're working on now.
Thank you, Cleve. It's been a very dynamic situation over the last two weeks. Staff has been working many, many hours on this project. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on item 12.5? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment and then bring it back to the council. Carl, did you have a questions or comments?
No, Robin Rose indicated we're spending this money on the roads. We could be using it on sewers and waters. No, we can't. This is Prop 1B funds that come from the state of California, along with the Transportation Commission. We got two projects going in Eldorado County from this latest round with the California Transportation Commission. This project and then Eldorado Hills Boulevard Exchange, westbound, north side of the freeway, which you'll saw that bottleneck, and I believe that was a little over $15.7 million was the grant on that. So these grants are voter-approved funds six years ago, when the bond was passed by the voters of the state of California for specific traffic mitigation issues and projects, and they're on a competitive basis. So you compete with other states, other parities of the state. If you don't complete it within this one, if we don't start this or have a contract in place by...
November.
November something, I think it's the 12th, 30th, 20th, then we lose that and it goes back into the fund. Again, like I like to say is, if we don't use it on the roads in Eldorado County, it will probably go to the Bay Area or to LA area. They have much larger needs. A small $5 million, $6 million part of that bond can go to a couple of, part of a little bit of an off-ramp down there, maybe. But anyway, those things are done. All of the plans of this project, we've been working on for several years. Mr. Smith brought up a couple of things about the landscaping, there is beautification funds in there. There's, I've looked through the bid documents that broke the number of different funds that are spent. There's a number of the rock walls that are replicated that you see along the freeways, along Missouri Flat recently, and also on our overpass, there was a number of, it's not just poured gray concrete, it has a rock treatment to it, and that's done by some specialized contractors, subcontractors that Doug Veercamp would use, or Tykert would use, or whomever. So many of these things are done, and I'm not sure about the tree bank, but I guess Mike can answer that question.
Perhaps this is a good time to have Mike answer that, if those are your comments. Carl, thank you very much.
Yeah, be happy to.
Mike, could you address that issue of the tree bank and the landscaping in general, if you could just briefly?
Right. Yeah, no, it's very good questions, and I will certainly invite anyone who wishes to review the plans that we put out for the bid, for the construction bids. We do have them available in our engineering department for anyone that would like to come in and review them, certainly welcome to. And let's see, I guess to address a few questions, Councilmember Hagan, you mentioned the decorative wall treatments. Those are a component of the project. It's in fact, one of the Caltrans, you know, kind of standards or requirements for these projects nowadays. I will say that in general, this fundamentally, it is a project occurring within the Caltrans right-of-way. It is effectively a project that requires Caltrans review and approval at all phases, including design, landscaping, and aesthetic treatments. So they have reviewed it to make sure that the project meets with their standards and expectations. That said, you know, ultimately, it is their right-of-way, and so we are subject to, we don't have full discretion, if you will, in terms of what plants can go where. They do need to meet with their standards for line of sight, access, maintenance, et cetera. There, you know, there's certainly, with this first phase of the project, I will say that the overall project has been through environmental review, through an environmental impact report, which was certified a few years ago. That environmental impact report required tree mitigation measures, and there's a little bit of discussion, a very brief discussion of that in the staff report. But to elaborate on it a bit, there are trees required to be removed to build a new on-ramp onto Highway 50, and I think some of that obviously was to be expected. Certainly that's fully disclosed and discussed in that environmental impact report in detail, with detailed biological surveys, tree surveys that were done to assess just how many trees would need to be removed. With the construction project, particularly with Phase 1A, there's very limited room to introduce new tree plantings into that area. In future phases, there are much larger areas to do landscape, more integration of landscape treatments. The mitigation measure in the EIR calls for, for almost, for most of the tree species, a replanting or a mitigation ratio of three to one. In other words, for every tree removed, and it's very, it's very loose in terms of what a tree is. You know, there are certain trees that, certain diameter, at certain height off the You know, there are certain trees that, certain diameter, at certain height off the ground that have to be mitigated on that three-to-one basis. In other words, for every tree removed, three new trees must be planted. There is flexibility in terms of planting those trees onsite within the project area. If that's not an option because of just space constraints, again, in Phase 1A, there are, it is a very constrained space, but on future phases, we hope to integrate more. The alternative to that is payment into what is called a tree mitigation bank. Effectively, what a tree mitigation bank is, is a system throughout the state of habitat restoration areas that are basically done via either in fee title or via land conservation easements that are administered and approved by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the California Department of Fish and Game, and also the regional water quality control board. All have permits associated with this project that that tree mitigation must be consistent with. And so, any tree mitigation program that the city contributes funds towards, and hence that $140,000 line item for this phase of the project, must be a program that is certified and approved by those organizations at the state level and the federal level as well. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. EPA, and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association Fisheries Division, as well as the California Department of Fish and Game, all have oversight over these, basically what is a riparian and oak woodland habitat restoration programs. The equivalent, because of the tree removals, the equivalent new plantings that is required via the EIR mitigation is about 700 new oak trees to be planted. Those plantings have to be by state, by the monitoring protocols, have to be very closely monitored over a period of more than five years. And so, because of the scale of the number of trees that we're talking about and the monitoring requirements, it begins to make sense to do them in tree mitigation banks as opposed to trying to do them, a tree here, a tree there, a tree there, either in the project, which in the project is a fairly discreet area, so it's fairly easy to monitor. Once you start, you know, trying to spread things out throughout a community, it becomes very unwieldy to monitor to the requirements required by these other state and federal organizations. So, in short, many jurisdictions use these banks very commonly in order to get, you know, kind of more economies of scale of the tree and riparian habitat established. And that's, it would likely be a combination of the two that we end up using, both onsite tree plantings as well as payment to one of these, an approved mitigation bank. So, that's the approach that we've anticipated using for this project. Let's see. I think, let's see, there was a question as well in terms of the sewer line that I wanted to address. And that was raised, you know, the, answered in part by Councilmember Hagan. The $6 million really is paying for the vast majority of that sewer line replacement, the one that goes under Highway 50. It is only the incremental component of upsizing that line, literally the larger pipe going from eight inch to 12 inch, that the city would be burying the cost of. All of the other costs associated with that, that would otherwise go into just replacing an eight-inch line with an eight-inch line, come from that $6 million grant. So, happy to answer any...
And didn't Susan say that this was a very important project inasmuch as you've had a lot of problems?
It is, yes.
So, you know, it's not anything that we're doing just because?
It absolutely is a very much-needed upgrade on that line. Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions for what Mike has presented to us?
Not a question, a comment.
Okay. Go ahead and comment, please.
I have a comment on the project overall. I think it's important for us to also keep in mind that there's a larger issue at stake with this infrastructure, and that is the courthouse. It is essential that we retain the courthouse in the City of Placerville. And our courthouse now is outdated. It has to move. And if we don't build this infrastructure now and we have the funds to get started, that courthouse cannot be in the proposed location next to the jail that makes sense. So, it's very important to see how crucial this infrastructure is to that future project, which is crucial to the City of Placerville. And I also want to, once again, express our gratitude to the county for making this possible. Because without their partnership in this deal, it wouldn't be possible. And we're very grateful for that. And also, would just like to express that I'm very pleased to award the bid to a local company that has proven to be fiscally responsible with quality work, as was seen on Turner Street when they did that excellent project recently and came in underbid. So, I think that's fantastic to have them at the helm of this very large project to make sure that it's done conservatively and that it's well and it's fiscally responsible. So, I'm delighted a local contractor gets it.
Patty, did you have a comment?
Well, I couldn't agree more with Wendy. I was also going to mention the courthouse issue. But I wanted to say too, that so many times during our meetings, when we report out to what we've been doing, we talk about being on the, there's three of us, Mark and I and Carl, that sit on the El Dorado County Department of Transportation, excuse me, and they were instrumental in pursuing this grant in the very beginning. There's also four members from the Board of Supervisors sit on that and commission. And we were just thrilled when we found out about this and through a whole number of negotiations, that this has finally come to fruition. And I just, I want the people to know that these are some of the things that happened because of the numbers of hours and the committees and commissions and stuff that we sit on. And this is certainly going to be beneficial for our city and county. So, I thank everyone that had a hand in it.
Thank you, Patty. Carl, did you have anything further? I have a question for Mike.
Oh, you want to make a motion?
Oh, no. I haven't made my comments yet.
Don't be emotional.
Yeah, we all want to, we all want to...
I want to talk to Mike. And I appreciate the audience's concerns about the landscaping on the project. And that is a component that happens far into the future. And no one really knows exactly what will remain until the Verkamp Engineering Group does their thing out there. Mike, will staff have opportunities as this moves forward to meet with Caltrans and our project manager and the contractor to fine-tune those plans, not only just the tree mitigation, but identifying what those landscape possibilities will be as this thing evolves?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we move forward, we're certainly going to be meeting with, you know, with the contractor, with Valley Cooper, who's our project manager on board, to look at opportunities where the project can be, you know, let me say this, I mean, it's absolutely our preference to mitigate onsite whenever we possibly can. And so, we absolutely will be looking at, not only is it somewhat less costly to mitigate it onsite, but it's also a direct benefit in terms of the beauty of the project. So, we absolutely will look at and continue to look at those landscape plans to continue to refine them, work with Caltrans as the project moves forward. And as things, as you, I think, very well and duly noted, as things progress in terms of the actual construction activity, you get a better sense of what's really going to work and what's on plans and, you know, on plan sheets. Sometimes the reality of it needs to be adjusted somewhat as you go. That's true of any project, particularly any sizable project like this. And so, we will certainly be moving forward with that in mind and with the, I think, the best interest of the aesthetics of the community in mind, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate all your hard work on this, Cleve. I appreciate all your long hours. Mr. Warren?
And I'd like to, Nate couldn't be here this evening, some well-deserved time off. And I wanted to specifically thank Nate and all of our engineering staff that have put so much time and energy into this, into bringing this to this point. So, I want to thank them personally on that. So...
Thank you very much for reminding me that Nate did a wonderful job earlier this year when he was handed that whole department, literally overnight. And he completed a tremendous number of projects, including keeping Turner Street and Lower Main repaved this year. That would not have happened without his efforts. Before I ask for a motion, I again would just like to thank those that spoke on this item and remind those that are passionate about it that the opportunity to work with city staff is in the future. Once this project gets underway, there will definitely be opportunities to fine-tune what Caltrans has proposed and what will actually work out on the site. And, you know, it seems rather ironic that this level of concern is placed on putting a ramp on this particular bridge. Because I remember when this bridge was first built, it was affectionately and mockingly referred to as the Bridge to Nowhere because there was an overpass with absolutely no ramps on it. So, here we sit after six or eight years of work, hopefully just a few minutes from being successful and starting a ramp project on this bridge. And, you know, to have the 11th hour concern about landscaping and those issues is certainly appropriate, but the idea that we're going to be removing some pristine and untouched native vegetation is absolutely false because none of those trees can be any older than when Highway 50 was rebuilt back in Jack Sweeney's day in the late 50s and early 60s when they rebuilt it. So, every bit of dirt there probably has been disturbed. I'm sure there isn't a tree out there over 40 years of age. They're live oaks. They grow like weeds. I have them all over my property. They will, this will be a much better experience, I think, given our, you know, future ability to control what goes on as the project moves forward and it refines itself. So, unless someone can come up with a way to stop traffic from increasing on Highway 50, I think we need to realize that we have a wonderful county. People like to be able to travel through it. We provide a number of services off the top of the hill there for the county, for our court system, our juvenile hall. They all need to have modern access. We're very lucky to have a courthouse project that did not get removed from the state financing schemes. And this ramp, again, is critical to that project. And having a safe and accessible courthouse to everybody that has the right to have access to our judicial services, we have a responsibility to make sure that that can move forward smoothly too. Again, this project is a key component of that. Robin, we're not going to be taking any further public... No, ma'am. No point of order. Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Thank you very much. So, with that, I would like to call for a vote. If someone would like to make a motion.
Well, I'd like to move that we, and do you want me to name all five items in here?
You want...
Or each one? How do you want to do it?
You can just move for staff recommendation or to adopt the resolution as outlined in the amended staff report.
So, move.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Varela and seconded by Vice Mayor Mattson. Mrs. Zino, could I please ask you to call a roll?
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Varela.
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mattson.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to staff. Thank you Supervisor Sweeney for your support through this process. Maybe we can bring some trees down to your Missouri Flat project and plant them.